Everyone, we're going to get started here. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, January the 8th, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cablecast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, January 10th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, January 12th at 12:00 PM noon on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at the3w.eldgrovescity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Pursuant to -- pardon me. So Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which should be found at the back of the chamber and provided to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Hager prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I was going to move into the call to order and the roll call, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
I will note that Councilmember Suen is absent. Vice Mayor Robles.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement, and to assist will be our Vice Mayor, Sergio Robles.
We honor and respect and acknowledge the Elk Grove First inhabitants, the Plain Meawocks, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and the waterways since the time of Emeril. We commensurate and advocate their dissents and the Wilton Rancheria tribe, the only federalized recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of their bravery, resilience, determination, and their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I would like to invite Councilmember Spees to lead us this evening.
Handover heart, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join us for a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you. May I get an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda. That will take us to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, and that first item being 4.1, which is a recognition of the Elk Grove Town Planner 20th Anniversary.
All right, excellent. At this time, I would like to call up Joyce Nazabal, the publisher of the Elk Grove Town Planner. We're going to be honoring the 20th anniversary, and I'm going to be reading a few things here. So whereas for over 39 years, the Town Planner Free Calendar has been delivered to communities all across America, and for the last 20 years, the Elk Grove Town Planner has arrived in the month of December, where each edition features thoughtful local event imagery, community event listings, important phone numbers, and money-saving coupons. And whereas Joyce Nazabal has operated the Elk Grove Town Planner for over two decades and has expanded the footprint of communities served with the Town Planner calendars to include Sacramento, Arden Arcade, Arden Park, and West Sacramento. And whereas Joyce Nazabal has maintained the Elk Grove Town Planner as a locally-owned business that meets the challenges and extends opportunities to local business owners to connect to current and potential clients, has fostered a communal, ongoing investment and care of the area, uniting residents to services in the region, and has crafted a wonderful, central resource of upcoming annual events and milestones, providing a means to plan and gather together to celebrate as a community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby extends its congratulations to Joyce Nazabal and the Elk Grove Town Planner on the occasion of its 20th anniversary celebration, expressing our sincere gratitude for the attentiveness and commitment taken to bringing community together, integrating business, services, and events into a convenient resource, and imparts our hope that Joyce Nazabal and the Elk Grove Town Planner continue to experience a successful and prosperous future. Signed, this 8th day of January 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the Mayor and the City Council for this incredible recognition. It really does mean the world to me on my 20th anniversary of my business. I love my community. This is my home, and I love what I do, producing and sharing this useful community calendar with our Elk Grove community and beyond. I'm happy to once again also be able to include the Elk Grove Unified School Schedules in the calendar. I owe so much of my journey to my friends and family, especially to my daughters Brianna and Madison Carter and my husband Raul Nazabal. Thank you for standing by me through all the good, the hard, and the crazy, especially deadlines. Your love and encouragement has been my foundation. I also want to express my deepest gratitude to the advertising sponsors who actually make this possible, including current and former council members, for believing in this community calendar and helping it thrive. And a special thanks also to the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce for their support over the years. It's been an honor to be a member for two decades, and now I get to serve on the Chamber's Board of Directors. Thank you once again for this incredible honor. It inspires me to keep going and expanding. And in fact, I'm already hard at work on my special 20th anniversary calendar for 2026. Thank you.
If you want to wait right there, we're going to come present this to you. Congratulations. Happy New Year.
How are you?
Congratulations.
Twenty years.
We're going to Disneyland.
I'll stand right here.
Yes.
Here we go.
One, two, three. One more for good measure.
She's jumping out.
My sister.
Of course.
Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Twenty more years.
Twenty more years.
Thank you.
All right, next up is public comment. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. We have one person signed up to speak, Daniel Alvarez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Daniel Alvarez. I'm a carpenter at Local 46. I'm just curious to talk about the benefits that the apprenticeship does and how it has changed my life. Before, I worked on the trace. I used to work at restaurants, like sold cars, I did a lot of stuff. When I joined the trace and I became a carpenter, that apprenticeship gave me all the skills and the knowledge to perform all the jobs and the best I could. Now I'm able to afford a house and I can provide to my family now. So I'm proud of that, and I want to keep it that way, bringing jobs with prevailing wage and giving more opportunity to more people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see anybody else signed up to speak. I'll close public comment and move on to our City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jason Berman, your City Manager. Happy to report on several items this evening. First of all, as has been reported in the news and discussed on social media recently, Sloan Low, the barbecue restaurant located on Railroad Street in historic downtown is closed effective January 1st. Staff has been advised that plans are in place for the space to open as Horn Barbecue. The third location, this dining concept from acclaimed area chef Matt Horn, we are excited to welcome Horn Barbecue into Elk Grove and look forward to the grand opening soon. Council and public may recall that the city provided a loan guarantee through River City Bank in favor of Sloan Low in the amount of $500,000 by pledging funds already on deposit at the bank as collateral for the loan. The loan is still active, and no city funds have been forfeited. Most of the loan funds guaranteed by the city were used to make permanent improvements to the building and purchase equipment and fixtures which remain in place and will be used by the new owners of the restaurant space. In September, the city partnered with SMUD and the City of Sacramento to apply for a charging and fueling infrastructure grant through the Department of Transportation. We were notified this week that the application was successful, and an $11.6 million grant will help us to install electric vehicle charging stations at nine locations, five of those being in the City of Elk Grove, but publicly accessible locations. As we begin to implement the project, the city will be working with SMUD to engage with the community about the benefits of electric vehicles. Elk Grove Restaurant Week kicks off this Friday and will run from January 10th through the 19th. Residents can explore Elk Grove's vibrant dining scene by trying something new, taking advantage of special offers through the free Elk Grove Restaurant Week Mobile Pass. Visit elkgroverestaurantweek.com to learn more. The community is invited to start the MLK Holiday Weekend at a Community Breakfast hosted by the National Action Network and sponsored by the City of Elk Grove on Saturday, January 18th at District 56. A big thanks to our own council member here, Rod Brewer, who's been instrumental in planning and organizing this event. The community members will reflect on Dr. King's enduring message of equality and justice with a program featuring guest speakers and entertainment that honors Dr. King's dream. Purchase your tickets online through Eventbrite. Details are available on the city's website. Applications are now being accepted for the Spring Cohort of Elk Grove 101, an immersive eight-session course for community members interested in learning more about their local government. The program is free and open to anyone 18 and older who lives or works in Elk Grove. Spring classes will run from April 1st through May 20th on Tuesday mornings from 9:00 to 11:30 in at District 56. Details are online and applications can be found on the city's website. It's open now. This is different from the first two cohorts that we had, which were evening programs. This is a daytime program. We're kind of changing it just to see if there's people that maybe could make the evening session that might want to go during the daytime and see what kind of response we get. So please share the word. We've had great response, and people have really loved this program to date. Elk Grove PD is also accepting applications for their Spring 2025 Citizens Academy. This 11-week program will be held on Tuesday nights beginning on February 4th. This is a unique opportunity to get a behind-the-scenes look at the Elk Grove Police Department. Visit the police department's website for details. With additional funding, nonprofits can do so much more for our community to support their work. The city will open the application period for grants in FY 2526 this Friday, January 10th. The city will host a technical assistance webinar on Tuesday, January 21st from 12:30 to 2:30 to provide an overview of the eligibility requirements and the application process for prospective applicants. More information is available on the city's website. Nominations for our 2025 Stars of Service Awards will open on Monday, January 13th. If you know an individual or organization making Elk Grove a better place to live, work, or play, recognize their volunteer efforts by submitting a nomination online on the city's website before February 28th. Award recipients will be recognized at a City Council meeting in April. Just a reminder, recruitment is currently underway for seven new positions on the Arts and Creative Economy Commission. The commission will advise City Council and staff on programs, projects, and strategies to grow and sustain Elk Grove's art and creative economy. Details will be posted on the city's website. Applications will be accepted through February 5th, so please help spread the word. In accordance with the city holiday schedule, City Hall will be closed on Monday, January 20th in observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. The Animal Shelter and Special Waste Collection Center will also be closed. I also want to give an update for the City Council and the community. Our Finance Director, Matt Pollan, has announced his resignation effective January 24th. Jackie Guzman, our Assistant City Manager, will be serving as interim Finance Director until recruitment is completed. Matt has made a tremendous impact in Elk Grove, and we wish him well in his new role as Finance Director for the City of Sunnyvale. So that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. We're moving on to our next item, which is our consent calendar items. At this time, I will open up public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up for this. I'll close public comment and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
That'll take us to Section 8, our public hearings. And Item 8.1 is a series of annexations to committee facilities, districts, and assessment districts for the projects of 10600 Oak Pond Lane Tentative Parcel Map and 8767 Excelsior Road Map.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of the City Council. My name is Cara Taylor Seaman. I'm the Finance Manager, and I'm here to present the public hearing for special tax districts and annexations into those districts. Just as some background, the city maintains eight special tax districts. The annexations are appropriate into the appropriate districts are typically part of the improvement process, and the requirements for each specific district is -- it varies according to the geographical location and the building use for that project, and each are subject to annual rate adjustments. This evening, there are two projects that are being presented for consideration. One is the 10600 Oak Pond Lane Tentative Parcel Map, and the other is 8767 Excelsior Road Map. Those are each being annexed into the four districts on the slide there, CFD 2003-2, which is the city's Police Services District, CFD 2006-1, which is the city's General Maintenance District, Street Maintenance District Number 1, Zone 3, and Stormwater Drainage Fee, Zone 2. The first project is the 10600 Oak Pond Lane Tentative Parcel Map. This consists of two residential family units, and it's located near Grant Line and Sheldon Road. The other one is very close by, Grant Line and Sheldon Road, and it's the 8767 Excelsior Road Map. It's also two single-family residential units. And that concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions you may have.
All right, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 Annex 76 open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 Annex 76 is closed, and look for Motion 1.
Motion A1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I would like to request the results of the ballot tabulation, please.
Of four possible votes, four affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Next is our motions A2 and A3.
Motions A2 and A3.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 100 open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone sign up to speak. I'll declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 100 closed, and look for Motion B1.
Motion B1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And may I request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Of four possible votes, four affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure, and a resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Next up is motions B2 and B3.
Motions B2 and B3.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I will declare the public hearing for SMD 3-AR Annex 55 open and open up public comment opportunity. There is still nobody signed up to speak to this. I will close public comment and declare the public hearing for SMD 3-AR Annex 55 now closed, and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest. Of four possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the properties, four affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved. The proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Thank you. And next up is motion C.
Motion C.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our fourth public hearing, I will declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 70 now open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for SWDF Annex 70 is now closed, and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
And no surprises, there is no majority protest. Of four possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property, four affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved. The proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Looking for motion D.
Motion D.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I will declare the public hearing for SMD 3-AR Annex 55 open and open up public comment opportunity. There is still nobody signed up to speak to this. I will close public comment and declare the public hearing for SMD 3-AR Annex 55 now closed, and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest. Of four possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the properties, four affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved. The proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Thank you. And next up is motion C.
Motion C.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our fourth public hearing, I will declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 70 now open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for SWDF Annex 70 is now closed, and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
And no surprises, there is no majority protest. Of four possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property, four affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved. The proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Looking for motion D.
Motion D.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, Item 9.1. And would the record reflect that Councilmember Suen is present?
And 9.1 is to receive information and consider a resolution approving the legislative principles and procedures for calendar years 2025 and 2026. Oh, you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Crystal Love Lazard. I am your Community Engagement and Government Relations Program Manager. Tonight, I'm going to briefly present an update of the 2024 Legislative Session. Is this playing correctly?
The slideshow mode?
Yeah.
And now you're good.
I'm good.
And the keyboard should take you to the next steps.
Thank you. As you know, our Legislative Affairs Program tracks and engages on proposed state and federal bills to look out for the best interest of Elk Grove. We use the City of Elk Grove's legislative principles as guidance. The 2024 Legislative Session was very busy, again, no surprises. Of the more than 2,500 bills introduced this year, 1,206 made it to the Governor's desk. Governor Newsom vetoed 189 and signed 1,017 into law. So like every year, this presentation will very briefly cover a few of the notable laws. It's important to note that last year was the second year of the 2023-2024 session, so all statutes took effect January 1st of this year unless otherwise noted. Of the over 2,500 bills, you know, we saw a multitude of topics covered, but there were several major themes legislatively. So these four areas were where we saw a lot of activity, so none of these, I'm sure, are surprises to any of you. So we're going to go through these budget deficit, retail theft, infrastructure and climate, and then of course, housing and homelessness. So starting with the budget, the legislature closed a projected $47 billion general fund deficit across the three-year budget window using a broad array of budget tools that you can see listed here in these bullets. As you know, as well as I, that the funding shifts, delays, and deferrals impacted several important programs. However, the budget deficit this large required a lot of concessions on all sides. So the budget challenge had a big impact on the legislature in 2024. Another big topic that I know many of you know was retail theft. So both the Senate and the Assembly focused on this in 2024 and made public safety reform a top priority last year. The City of Elk Grove joined a significant number of cities across California on the Yes on 36 Coalition. The voters passed Proposition 36 by a wide margin last November. Okay, there are a lot of actions in this space, but I wanted to highlight these 11 bills. This was a noteworthy package of retail theft bills that all were passed last year. They were designed to deter retail theft and represent basically a significant policy change for California. The passage of the Infrastructure and Climate Bond Act last November will provide a significant amount of funding to make California more resilient as it faces the effects of climate change. A high-level overview of the funding priorities are listed on this slide. The majority of the funding will be used to address water and fire-related impacts. I imagine, like me, all of you are watching the news today about the horrific fires down in Southern California. These types of events are becoming all too common, and our hearts go out to the residents that are being evacuated and the first responders on the ground. We hope to do many good things with the opportunity presented with this climate bond. Okay, the legislature strengthened its policy on wetlands last year. AB 2875 declared that it is state policy to ensure no net loss and a long-term gain in the quantity, quality, and performance of wetland acreage. So this is something we will be looking at and taking into account, especially our Community Development Department. Okay, to continue the state's goal to reduce dangerous solid waste going into landfills, SB 1280 prohibits the sale of propane cylinders unless they are reusable or refillable, although this has an effective date farther out, so we have time to get ready for this. We saw numerous bills focus on the speeding up of the transition to electric vehicles. These two bills illustrate the impact on our local planning decisions and, again, things that will impact our community development programs. Similarly, there were many bills passed in 2024 aimed at speeding up the housing approval process and focusing specifically on fees. So these, again, are four bills that illustrate some of these changes. Let's see, a major focus in 2024, no surprise, was housing and homelessness. So this, we saw many changes to the housing elements. These are two just two examples of changes to our conservation element and our safety element. So there's going to be a lot of just planning changes. Housing and homelessness, again, major focus. These were two bills illustrative. I feel like we could talk all night about housing and homelessness. I did want to note that the City of Elk Grove opposed AB 1886, but we were unsuccessful. But there were a significant number of housing and homelessness bills again this year, as illustrated again by the RENA changes. So this is a change to our housing element, and it introduces two new categories to our low-income housing element. So there's just more guidance that's going to come from HCD in the future, but this are, again, many, many changes that we will be taking into account as we proceed forward. Housing enforcement, again, you can't have housing without enforcement. So SB 1037 was a bill that the City of Elk Grove strongly opposed, along with the California League of Cities and many others, on the grounds, specifically this third bullet here, that for any local agency act or mission that is arbitrary, capricious, entirely lacking in evidentiary support, contrary to established public policy, unlawful, or procedurally unfair, we felt that was vague and up to interpretation, but we were unsuccessful in our opposition to this bill. So again, SB 1037 is another bill that we will consider moving forward. Okay, I could talk literally all night about housing, but HR was very closely watching this bill, so I wanted to note AB 2561, which requires local agencies to present the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts at public hearings at least once per fiscal year, but it really dealt with if there was an excess of 20% within a bargaining unit. That's when that sort of triggered, but HR, I'm sure, is on this, watching it. Last but not least, AB 98 was something that our Economic Development Program closely watched, and the City of Elk Grove did also oppose. This dealt with prohibitions to new or expanded logistics uses, like warehouses, near sensitive receptors, unless a whole myriad of standards are met. We were also unsuccessful in this opposition as well. We didn't lose everything, so we had one really giant win that I would remiss not to mention. So Senate Bill 739, this bill empowers-- So Senate Bill 739, this bill empowers the city of Elk Grove to use the construction manager-at-risk contract model for the new zoo and its related infrastructure, ensuring the highest standards of quality and efficiency in this development. So we again greatly appreciate the partnership with Senator Ashby for authoring this bill and shepherding it through and getting it ultimately passed. So we say thank you again to her and that was huge. And some of the bills that we opposed did actually fail. So we had AB 2557 did not pass and AB 2593 as well. So I just want to put it on the record that, you know, we do not win every battle, but there are some that we were successful in opposing in partnership with other cities. Looking ahead to 2025 and 2026, we begin the first year of a two-year session. There are over 30 new lawmakers up at the Capitol, so lots of new faces. We are anticipating significant policy changes at the federal level that we're watching and adapting. And then also noting that there's still a projected $2 billion California state budget shortfall. So there are still budget challenges ahead that we will be moving through. So that concludes what could be a very long presentation. Any questions?
Thank you for that excellent presentation. At this time, I will open up public comment. I do not have anyone signed up. I'll close the public comment. I have a couple of questions. As it relates to the bills that we've opposed, or whatever positions we've taken actually, is it possible to get in the future, or even for these, you can send it to us, the score card? I would like to see where our local leaders landed on these key bills.
Would the mayor like just our, you know, Ashby and Nguyen or the regional leaders?
Maybe regional, just to get a good, just to get a sense of where, you know, how they're voting.
Yeah, of course.
And if they're voting in the interest of not only our city but other cities would be helpful, I think.
Yeah.
That's all I have for that. Any other questions? Looking to the left, looking to the right? No further questions. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right, well, we are sailing through this agenda here.
We do have a resolution that is part of this item, so that we would ask council to take into consideration.
Oh yes, absolutely. And the motion is, you see here, to adopt the resolution approving our legislative principles and procedures for calendar years 25 and 26.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next up is our council comments, reports, future agenda items. I'll start with councilmembers' pieces.
I do have two, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, on the EV charging, the grant, congratulations. Good work. I mean, that's, having more EV charging available for residents is a very good thing. And then I'm bummed, Mr. Pollan, I'm sad to see you go, but you know, I think the budget, as I've mentioned before, is kind of like the lifeblood, right? And everybody always wants to know about the budget, but then the minute you start getting into the budget, people are like, oh, too much information, right? So I just want to thank you for the time that you've been here. I know you were here, of course, during our tax increase, right? And that was, that's definitely some work and, you know, managing Measure E and all of that going forward. I want to thank you for your service that you've given to Elk Grove and Sunnyvale, I guess it is, Sunnyvale? Sunnyvale got a win.
Not as sunny as here, though.
But congratulations to you. Thank you very much for everything you did for us in Elk Grove.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Brewer.
I just want to piggyback on councilmember Spies' comments for Mr. Pollan and his service to Elk Grove as Finance Director, when he managed the budget. It's more than just making sure the numbers add up, it's making sure that we stay fiscally clean and healthy, because when people, when we do our audits and we're going through the process, we want to make sure that we're reaching not only fiscal muster, but also fiscal ethical muster as well. And through you and your team, you do a great job of navigating those waters, being very cooperative with the auditors, and making sure that not only are we reaching compliance and meeting compliance, but exceeding it. And so it's very important that when Sunnyvale has you, that they definitely utilize you in all aspects, because having a whistle-clean report goes a long ways towards a city's fiscal health. And so I want to thank you. Thank you so much for your leadership all these years here and walking us through the process and helping it make sense for us in layman's terms.
Thank you. Councilmember Suin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off with thanking Matthew as well for your service. You not only, I wanted to also echo the sentiments of Councilmember Brewer and Spies, but you helped walk us through our biggest financial commitment in terms of the zoo and helping everyone understand that decision from a financial perspective, how, you know, we could afford it or how it would affect our budget. So that was a great task, so really appreciate your effort there and the rest of your service to the city. I will just say, I'm not sure, I didn't realize we developed a little turf war going on with the city of Sunnyvale right now. So I think you're going to find we were better. No, I'm just kidding. I go there. For my restaurant report, we had our sewer district meeting today, Council Vice Mayor Robles and I. Nothing to report out there. And then next week will be my first meeting as Chair of Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Thank you.
All right, and our Vice Mayor.
Matthew, just wanted to say thank you, kind of echoing our colleagues' statements. You made a great impact in our city and we're definitely going to miss you. We're looking forward for the great things you're going to do in Sunnyvale and wishing you the best of luck out there. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will also start off by thanking Mr. Pollan for your service and dedication to our city, for our strong fiscal health, balanced budget, something that, you know, we don't take for granted. We know that it's not something that most cities can say, including our state. So thank you for all of the work that you've done keeping our fiscal health steady. So appreciate all that you've done and the best of luck to you in your new role, wishing you continued success. And today I did attend the State of Public Safety address from our District Attorney, Tian Ho. I had the opportunity to speak in regards to Proposition 36, but happy to say that, you know, one of the best things about our DA is that he is big on collaboration. And he invited two of our county supervisors, we had nonprofit leaders, we had painful stories from a family who lost their son to fentanyl poisoning and just, you know, just proud of the work that he's doing. And it's just great to have such a strong partnership with our District Attorney. And with that, that's all, I waive my report.
Madam Mayor, I do have one more thing. I got to add on a little bit from Mr. Pollan here.
Yes, please.
The unfunded pension liability and bringing that down, sir. Most people are never going to talk about it because it's not terribly exciting, but it's important. It's an issue that's plagued a lot of cities across, not just, you know, just not the area, but across the state. And so again, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you so much for your kind words. I so very much appreciate it. I wanted to thank the council for their support in fiscal stewardship. The city doesn't end up in a place like it is financially by accident. It's the series of a long, a long series and history of really good decisions led by you and your colleagues and those who came before you up on the dais and implemented by the team led by Jason. I'm very proud of the work that my team and I did here. Thank you so much for your kind words. We did a lot of good work here and I'm sure that Jason and Jackie are going to find a leader worthy of Elk Grove in the Finance Department. So thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Before we adjourn, I do want to adjourn in the memory of those we've already lost with the fires happening down south. So our thoughts and our prayers are with all of the impacted residents and a shout-out to our Kasuna's Fire and our regional firefighters that are also going down there to assist in this horrific moment. So wishing everyone safety.
Absolutely.
During this difficult time. So I will go ahead and adjourn at 6:39. Thank you, everyone, and Happy New Year.